I'm happy.
We plow and my husband still spit. We get plowed.
Is everybody ready? Mm-hmm. Is this guy's ready? She's ready?
Good evening and welcome to the Southbridge School Committee meeting on Tuesday, February 12th. Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Agenda item number two is public input. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to speak this evening? Jill, good evening.
Jill Congdon, 298 High Street, speaking on behalf of the Southbridge Elementary PTA. I just wanted to thank everyone who attended our PTA showing of Including Samuel. I would also like to thank Chairwoman Woodruff, Mrs. McLaughlin, and Mrs. Donovan for showing their support in attending the event as well. It was really a remarkable movie and I think everybody district-wide should see this movie. It talked about inclusion, an inclusion in the classroom, and it was just amazing. Everyone shared personal stories after and we had a discussion and it really was a great production of Including Samuel. So, actually people can also watch Including Samuel online. They can download the movie for $1.99. So if people want to see it at home, they can look on our PTA Facebook and the link is there. It's through Amazon if they wanted to watch the movie at home. Also, I'd like to say so far we have 208 tickets sold to Southbridge School Night at the Worcester Sharks. Tickets are still available by calling Jason Jones from the Worcester Sharks at (508) 929-0503 and the tickets will be picked up at will call. And the West Street School and Charlton Street School 4th and 5th Grade Chorus will be singing "God Bless America" and the National Anthem. So, so far we have over 200 tickets sold, so it should be a really fun night. PTA sponsored a couple of pizza parties for the top Box Top Labels for Education and Coke Rewards classes that collected. And I would like to thank the Southbridge Lions Club for providing costume characters to deliver these pizzas to the classrooms at West Street, Charlton Street, and Eastford Road. And I would also like to thank all of the local pizza places who donated all these pizzas. Juliana's on Worcester Street, Central Pizza, Great Oak, Champion Pizza in Charlton, Big Y, and Pizza Chef who generously donated these pizzas for the classrooms. We're hosting the preschool pizza party tomorrow because they weren't there on Friday. So they'll have their pizza party tomorrow and they're all excited. Tomorrow, we also kick off our spring fundraiser. We're going to be selling butter braids and cookie dough. The order forms will be sent home with all the children tomorrow at all the schools. All breads and cookies are $12. Orders are due back on March 6th and orders will be picked up on Wednesday, March 20th from 3:00 to 7:00 at the old Southbridge High School cafeteria. Anyone who would like to volunteer to help with pickup distribution can contact us at southbridgepta@gmail if they would like to volunteer from 1:00 to 8:00 to distribute and set up. We already have a lot of people that have volunteered. A couple of the banks in town have some volunteers and a lot of parents have volunteered as well, but the more volunteers, the quicker it goes. Reach Out &amp; Read Day, it's our 21st annual Reach Out &amp; Read. Books have been distributed this week to readers and we're looking forward to that as well. We'd also like to do the drawing again for February's Teacher of the Month through Liberty Tax where each teacher, one teacher from each school, will win the gift basket. So I'd just like to introduce Liberty Tax who's generously donating those gift baskets to say a few words and we'll do the drawing of three lucky teachers.
Hi, my name is Cassie Baumgartner. I am the manager of the Southbridge Liberty Tax Service located right on 312 Main Street, right here in Southbridge. And we have the same lucky little boy who drew his teacher last month. He's drawing the three names for this month as well.
Mrs. Banfield, whose class has the pizza party tomorrow.
The first one is for Mrs. Banfield. And Ms. Banfield was from Eastford Road. This one is from Charlton Street. And this one is from Mrs. Fontaine. And the winner for that one is Mrs. King Karen. These three teachers are going to be receiving a gift basket from Liberty Tax as an appreciation for all the hard work that they do for our children in the community. Also, we would like to remind the community that at any point in time, they are also available and able to win a free vacation for themselves as well for anyone else, such as a teacher. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jill. Is there anyone else from the public who'd like to speak this evening? Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll move on to Agenda Item 3, Meeting Call to Order. Can we have a roll call, please?
Dr. Domingo.
Present.
Mrs. Donovan.
Present.
Mr. Lazzo.
Present.
Mrs. McLaughlin.
Present.
Dr. O'Leary.
Present.
Mrs. Principay.
Present.
Mrs. Woodruff.
Present.
Seven present.
Thank you. Agenda Item 5, Approval of Minutes. One, the regular school committee minutes from January 8th, 2013. Do I have a motion?
No move.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Mrs. Principay, seconded by Mrs. Donovan. Do we have any corrections or errors? Seeing none? All those in favor? All in favor? Regular school committee minutes for January 22nd, 2013. Do I have a motion?
No move.
Mrs. Principay, do I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Donovan, is there any errors or corrections in those minutes? Mrs. Donovan?
Yes, thank you. First thing that I noticed was the first paragraph, the name of the movie that was listed was typed as Finding Samuel, but as Mrs. Congdon stated this evening, the name of the movie was actually Including Samuel.
Okay, we can have that changed.
Yeah, just a couple other more, please. Just step back from your microphone for a minute. The second paragraph, I believe, I don't know if we want to just go back, I do not believe that is the correct address for the woman who spoke about the band instruments. I happen to know her and I do believe that that is not where she lives, so we can just, we can double check on that. And then my final recommendation is on page 3. Agenda item number 11. Acting Superintendent Mr. Nimberco presented and updated on new hires. Perhaps just drop that D in the word updated. And that is all. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other corrections? Seeing none? All in favor with the corrections being made? Okay, all in favor. We'll have those corrections and we can send out a copy. Alrighty, moving on. Our next agenda is Chairwoman's announcements and basically I just have an announcements about the microphones this evening. We're trying some new and different ways, mic is, to try and get the audience to be able to hear us as well as ourselves, so we have the speakers out there. So we'd just like to ask everyone to speak as close or as loudly as they can, but if you go too close, then you'll hear the feedback like we just did from Mrs. Donovan's microphone. So if you can wait a couple minutes, if you don't hear yourself, just wait a minute and then start speaking again for the adjustments, so that way everybody can hear everything. And that's pretty much all I have this evening for my announcements. So we'll move on to the reports. Representative of the Student Advisory Committee, Ms. Faith Mataria.
Hello, everyone. This week is actually a mini carnival week for the high school students, so we have a spirit week that leads off to the dance this Saturday and also a student-teacher basketball game pep rally on Friday to kind of end the basketball season. So it'll be, we're having the dance and it will be really fun. The basketball season for the girls is actually ending. We hope that they actually make it to districts. They have two games left. Today's the last home game and next Tuesday will be their last away game, so please support them if you can. Next week is also winter vacation, so remember that for your kids. And coming up after winter vacation will be the chorus concert for the high school kids, well, the middle school kids do. So it will be March 12th and that same week on Friday will be a talent show hosted by two students, actually, and the drama team with help from Ms. Krantz. And it will be a really fun event. Encourage your kids to audition for it and it will be nice to see you guys there. And that's it for today.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next, moving on, would be Agenda Item 8, and this will be the school committee reports. Curriculum Subcommittee, Mrs. Donovan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. There is no report, no meeting scheduled, however, I will be looking to set a meeting in March, but perhaps I can announce that at the next time we meet.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. And Policy Subcommittee, Mrs. Principay?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We've had several meetings. The first one was on the 16th of January, 5:00 PM. In attendance, the Policy Subcommittee, myself, Mrs. Donovan, Mrs. McLaughlin, also Acting Superintendent Mr. Nimberco and Terry Wiggins, Director of Finance and Operations, and Citizen Erin Quinney. We spent most of the evening just basically prioritizing what policies we were going to work on. One of them was fiscal management and actually the policy seems to be solid for fiscal management, but what has to be written up are the procedures. We've discussed that in great length and Mr. Nimberco said that, you know, procedures are basically written by the superintendent. So that has to be clarified, our procedures on fiscal management. We also decided we needed to lurk at, look at field trip policies and student travel. There was some complications with them, like requiring five weeks' notice for field trips, and that has to be clarified. The truancy policy, our truancy policy also is, we believe, to be very solid, but we need to look into the student handbooks and how the truancy policy is written there. One of the things they talked about was, we talked about was, in the middle high school or the high school, there was a 55 rule, that if a student misses five days of classes, they get an automatic grade of 55 in that class. And we're going to look into that because exemptions need to be made in certain instances. And that will all take place in the handbooks. We are ensuring that our sexual harassment policy is up to date. Our attorneys are looking at that to make sure that ours is correct. We do have two. One of them is going to have to be rescinded because they are identical policies. Just one applies to teachers and the other one applies to everybody else. So the one that's everybody is the one that we're going to keep and we will be rescinding the other one. Meals card policy, there were issues with that. Students who haven't paid three meals, they were getting a cheese sandwich and the milk. The policy really wasn't clear, so we were going to work on that. And school councils, that was another one of our priorities. And that's it for that meeting. We have two other meetings and I'll turn that over to Lawrence and she was gracious enough to take the minutes for those.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Principay. On January 30th and February 6th, we've, we held working policy Subcommittee meetings at the Administrative Office Buildings on Coal Avenue. We've been working to actually rewrite and we worked policies. On January 30th, Subcommittee Chair Principay was present along with Mrs. Donovan, myself, Kathleen, Alicia, the Food Service Director, and Community Member Leanne Pate. We reviewed the school meal charging policy and worked on that a bit. I believe we're going to be having the first reading a little later on tonight. We talked about the community use of school facilities now that we have Southbridge Middle High School that is able to be rented by outside groups, what that should look like, and field trips and student travel. And on February 6th, again, we picked up the school meal charging policy because in between the time that we had written a draft, a proposed revised draft, some new information came to us. The field trips and student travel policy was again reviewed. We've decided to merge some policies to make one policy so that there aren't several places in the policy manual for that to alleviate some confusion. And tomorrow morning, we have another working policy meeting scheduled, 9:00, Room M100 at Southbridge, the old Southbridge High School on Coal Avenue.
Thanks, I forgot that part. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies. Next, we'll hear from Dr. Domingo on budget facilities and transportation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Since the last school committee meeting, we had two Subcommittee meetings, on the 5th and the 12th of February. If you all remember a while back, we voted to approve a very large transfer to balance the certain accounts, which really prompted the Subcommittee to start looking more closely at very specific accounts and where are we going this year. Since Mr. Nimberco has joined us, he recommended we hold an audit of the financial system, which I think has begun, which will give us really additional confidence that our budget is going where it's going. There have been some expenditures that we did not budget for, made this year, that may affect the budget, but hopefully by the time the audit is done and recommendations are made, we will be taking the following step. We are paying very close attention to our largest account line item, which is 2,300 account line that covers all the instructional salaries that would have the most impact if something was to happen to the budget. For now, we believe based on the reports that we have received, that we are still on track to finish the year as predicted and hopefully that is going to be the case after our audits as well. Our next meeting will be scheduled for after the audit has been completed and we will keep everybody informed. Thank you.
Thank you. Collective Bargaining Subcommittee, Mrs. Principay?
Thank you. We are still negotiating with the Teachers Association. And our next meeting is tomorrow evening at 5:00. It is, it will be an executive session, but is at 25 Coal Ave, Room M100. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, Mrs. McLaughlin, Communication, Family, and Community Engagement Subcommittee.
Thank you. Just wanted to let everybody know that we have had to reschedule the parent forum that was originally planned to take place at Southbridge High School, I believe on the 11th, due to weather at that time. The parent forum at Southbridge Middle High School will take place now on Monday, February 25th at 6:30 PM in the cafeteria. We were able to confirm that with Mr. Leach yesterday. So I would encourage parents of middle and high school students to attend that forum and to give us some feedback. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item number nine is our presentations this evening. And this evening, we have Ms. Colleen Culligan, Director of Pupil and Personnel Services, doing an overview on special ed. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. I understand I'm competing with President Obama and my son made it clear he was going to watch a Bruins game, so there you have it. So thank you for having me this evening. I have given you all, I think, packets with the handouts and the power, copy of the PowerPoint that I'm going to be going over tonight. Thank you to Mr. Michael Montigny for getting me set up here. I'm going to try to, try to do this without messing up on the technology. So first of all, I wanted to just kind of do a quick overview of pupil personnel services. Now, as you know, this is sort of a newly generated position. It involves a lot of different departments and I am still learning about our, all of our different departments, the staff, the budgets that are within all of those departments. I know that the superintendent is working on an organizational chart, so I am still in the learning process myself and I will do my best to answer your questions as we go through this, but bear with me. So these are the major roles that I am outlining here tonight. I'm just going to touch on them briefly here. I go into them a little bit further as we go along. Obviously, the most important and the largest portion of the pupil personnel services is the Office of Special Education. We have a 20% proportionate number of special education students, very high for this district. And so that is an area of concern and focus in our accelerated improvement plan, in addition to special education achievement, which is well below the state average in also comparable districts. We have the School Health Services, which are our school nurses who, and I'm going to talk a little bit more about them in a moment. We have school counseling services. Some of that, most of that falls under school guidance. Homeless Families and Youth, we do have a homeless bilingual school social worker for the district. We have school psychological services, which involve all of our school psychologists. I am also responsible to a certain degree, not responsible, I mean, it's a team effort, but all of our schools are being charged to bring in positive behavioral interventions and supports, which falls under my department with respect to oversight and helping to support it because the special education department has a grant for special education program improvement, which pays for the May Institute to come and consult and help to get that seeded and germinated in all of our schools. That's at the very beginning stages. And the School Based Support Teams. School Based Support Teams, also known as the SBST, are a regular education initiative in which students are brought to teams whether they are experiencing either academic or behavioral concerns, for teachers to troubleshoot, problem-solve, collaborate among themselves, change their instructional methodology. The School Based Support Team is absolutely critical to reducing our special education numbers because it's an actual organized and structured intervention at the regular education level. And it is also just at the very beginning in the inception, so teachers, I believe, were trained in the summer along with administrators, but we're still developing our SBST teams. There is some confusion about what it entails, what teachers are supposed to be doing. It involves more data collecting and I'm going to get into that a little bit more when I start talking to you a little bit about response to intervention and our multi-tiered system of support. So the Office of Special Education embraces a very large number of all-encompassing legal statutes. They are listed here. IDEA is the primary one, Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. We also encompass transition services from early intervention, which is known famously as going from Part C to Part B, early intervention being Part C and Part B being special education at the preschool level, which is handled at the Eastford Road School. The Mass Education Reform Act or Ed Reform, Section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act, Section 504, which is under the American with Disabilities Act, and then Chapter 688 of the Acts of 1983, which are transition planning for students in need of continued services as adults. These are all of, this is the broad spectrum of supports for students in our district that we are charged and legally ordained to administer and provide for all of our students with disabilities. There are 10 types of disability categories. I think these were always interesting to look at because they've been changed over the last five to 10 years to these 10. And they do really involve a very broad spectrum, I think, and sometimes when we don't look at this, we forget how much is involved with respect to impairments that children can come to school with. So you obviously have these 10 categories here, which are categories that students who come to the IEP process are found eligible under a particular disability category. The one category that's not displayed here is multiple disabilities, a student that might have several of these disabilities combined into an IEP. So we have our School Based Team of folks. This is part of what I'm going to be looking at with respect to our organizational chart. We have in this particular district, and it does vary a little bit from district to district, but I'm learning what Southbridge has, what it has historically had. And it involves both special education teachers, our special education tutors, those are degreed personnel who provide instructional support in the classroom. We have paraprofessionals whom, to be highly qualified, must have a two-year degree or go through the paraprofessional professional development program. We do have applied behavioral analysis folks. This was a question, I think, at the last school committee meeting and I'm going to talk a little bit about what those folks do. Somebody was asking what the acronym stood for with respect to, we have BCBA's on staff, Board Certified Behavior Analysts. We have school psychologists. I touched on those. They do a lot of assessments, behavior specialists, clinicians, guidance counselors, school social workers, school adjustment counselors, school nurses, and our related service providers. All of these fall under the rubric of special education personnel that, you know, I am going to get to know, have oversight for, and participate in the teacher evaluator system with. You've got all your related service providers on the right. Those are under, it was the bottom category there, which I explicated for you in a little bit more detail. We do not have teachers of the deaf and visually impaired at this time. Those students do go out of district. So the School Health Services obviously encompass the school nurses. That's just a general statement. The school nurses have a school policy and procedure manual, which we are taking a look at as part of our program evaluation overall to see that it's updated. Nurses do medication dispensation, they do wellness, they do screenings, they do epidemiology, obviously, in the increase in flu and those kinds of things. They work in that area. And we do have one nurse at every single school full-time, which is, which is a good thing. I know, I came from a district, they tried to cut them and they ended up putting them back in again because I think the broad spectrum of health and wellness services and in particular also psychiatric concerns and medication has really caused that to be a pretty high-volume type of position, more so than it used to be in the good old days. We have school guidance. We have school guidance counselors in our schools at the elementary level and at the middle school and at the high school. This is an unusual configuration for me because typically in the past, we, I came from a district that used adjustment counselors at the elementary level and then used the guidance at the middle school and the high school level. So the elementary level guidance counselors, I'm learning a little bit more about their roles. They do encompass more of the school counseling piece that I'm more used to being seeing as attributed to clinical and/or adjustment counselor roles. The school guidance did not have an actual guidance curriculum that they've been working from, so I have had the opportunity to meet with them in the last two professional development days. We're looking at their roles, the needs of the school districts, and we're actually using the Massachusetts Guidance Curriculum for counselors to begin to carve out for them what their roles should be in the school and to develop one specific to Southbridge. We should have an actual guidance curriculum and document that we can present to the Southbridge Schools and the school committee when that's completed. So they have, that has not been developed yet and that is also at its inception. School Psychological Services. The school psychologists do a lot of very, very complex and complicated assessments at this time. We have excellent school psychologists. We do not have too many. We do not have too few. We do quite a number of assessments for eligibility for special education. We do them as well for reevaluation every three years, full psychological cognitive achievement tests, functional behavioral assessments are all conducted by our school psychologists. I've been very pleased with the level of expertise and professionalism of our school psychologists. However, we do not have yet a, an overarching understanding of what assessments are the best practices to be using in our schools at this time and which assessments should be waived or be waived or not waived for the IEP process, one of the things that we're looking at, and which assessments are best for our more verbally nonverbal students in order to get cognitive testing, and that would encompass our students with more pervasive developmental delays. So it's a challenging, it's a wonderful research-based kind of a service that's being provided, and I do have to say, you have excellent school psychologists, and they're working hard at trying to address the needs for the children in our district. We just have a few areas we need to continue to work on there. Let's see here. I just wanted to show you this, because it gives you a sense of what the applied behavior analysis track requirements are for board-certified behavior analysts. This is just a course outline in one of our local schools, what you would have to take in order to be able to be a board-certified approved behavior analyst. So you can see that it encompasses cognition, psychotherapy, psychological testing, research methods. There are labs that are done, and all kinds of very, very complex and complicated types of behavior analysis that is done, and this is done to a great degree in our specialized classrooms with our children with autism or other pervasive developmental disorders. So we do have these folks on staff. These are the, these are some of the staff that we brought back from, this was subcontracted in the past to HMEA, and I'm not sure what the other organization, there was another organization I'm not familiar with. And we brought these in-house to our folks, so that we have these folks on staff. They are evaluated now by pupil personnel, and they have provided an invaluable service, because they're in the schools, they know what's happening in the classrooms, and they're working directly with our children full-time. And we have a great need for them. This is a picture of a child that is getting some token reinforcement through discreet trial learning process, which is an ABA process. Related services, here's some nice pictures for you to see what some of our related service providers do, assistive technology, speech and language, PTO, vision. So that's just a kind of a quick overview. I want to talk to you a little bit about some of the directions that I feel, or we feel, in conjunction with the district leadership team, and talking to the new superintendent, and also looking at our accelerated improvement plan, speaking with our plan manager, looking at some of the directions that we need to go to really improve achievement for our special education subgroup. First and foremost, I think you do need to know, and I included it in your packet, that we have some compliance concerns. We have some significant compliance concerns. Every six years, all the districts have to go through what is called a coordinated program review. We are in the mid of that cycle, so it's called the mid-cycle review. We were found to be out of compliance with issues that were identified, subsequently corrected, and now are back out of compliance again. And I did include the state report to show you, there are usually, overall, there are about 56 indicators for compliance in the mid-cycle report, and basically, what they let you, what they let us know through this is if they've been implemented, partially implemented, or not implemented at all. We did receive, I did receive a letter from the state at the very end of January indicating what was not completed in the last report cycle, and we're on some very tight guidelines and timelines, and by June 2013, all of the compliance issues are supposed to be corrected, must be corrected, and we have to get superintendent assurance for that. We still have a long ways to go. We have a number of issues. As you can see, they do a thorough review of student records, they look at compliance forms, they look at IEPs, they look at process, they talk to parents in the community, they meet with teachers, and we do have a significant number of concerns that I'm starting to work on immediately. And those are fairly detailed in the report that I gave to you. That's one. The other issue, there's two other issues. One is that we are behind in the implementation of the American with Disabilities Act legislation that was brought forth in 2008, was supposed to be implemented by school districts in So we have redone all of the 504 forms, and I'm doing trainings in all of the schools to get us up to speed, so to speak, on compliance for 504. 504 is a regular education initiative, but it, basically, the courts over the last four or five years have broadened how many, the access that students have for, in the school environment. They've broadened the scope, the definition of what a disability is. This is not special education, it's often confused with it, but it still falls under pupil personnel. Students who sometimes do not qualify for special education can end up in a 504 accommodation process. So it does kind of arise sometimes through an eligibility process, or they can be identified by staff through the same kind of processes as the IDEA statute requires, which is through Child Find, and we also need to go out in the community, we need to, we need to all be aware whether or not a child has a difficulty, and whether they require accommodations. The difference between the 504 and the special education statutes is that special education provides very specialized instruction. 504 is focused on accommodations and equal access to the school environment and to the curriculum. So the focus is less on the disability and more on the accommodations that are being provided. We do have two outstanding corrective actions, one in which we are almost finished completing, actually both, they're almost finished completing, but they are ongoing. We have had to respond to them, I had to respond to them, and they are ongoing, and they have involved compensatory, both compensatory services and damages in the amount of dollars because of our lack of compliance with the process issues. I'm working on those. Obviously, a huge area of concern is how we're going to improve the achievement of our special education students. I would like to say that that's something that we can sort of isolate discreetly from everything else that we're doing in the schools, but practices for general education and special education do go hand in hand. I am aware that there was a, the implementation of an integrated service model, which is in theory, a very good model. I think the schools needed a lot of technical assistance, and still do, with respect to what that looks like, what does that mean? The concept of co-teaching and inclusion were introduced at the schools, but there's a lot of questions still about groupings, flexible groupings, how services are delivered, how many staff need to be working with how many individual students, and so that's still a work in progress. I do feel fairly strongly that by the end of this academic year, we will have a much better handle on what that can look like, what it does look like, and then that we will also have schedules and schedules in the schools that actually reflect a really well-integrated service delivery system. But we do not have that yet, and I am spending time working with the principals, a significant amount of time, just kind of getting that infrastructure set up with respect to their schedules and their service delivery, and making sure we're at least in compliance with our special education students and the amount of services that they do require. Response to intervention is a very important piece of this. The school-based support teams bring students to, our teachers bring students to the school-based support team. Response to intervention is a research-based type of response that is in our AIP, and it involves some very, very strong areas of data collection and new kinds of instructional practices that our teachers have not been exposed to in the past. So I'm gonna talk a little bit more about that in a moment. Positive behavioral interventions and supports, obviously, again, I touched on that briefly. We are evaluating our assessment tools, best practices for those. We are looking at our service delivery model with respect to the IEPs. And to summarize, we do need to look at the integrated service delivery and what it really looks like at the school level and at the classroom level, to correct any misunderstandings or thoughts about what that was supposed to be, and how we can, we can work with our students on a more individualized way, in a more individualized way, instead of just bringing, you know, a template, placing it down upon the students, and not having flexibility with respect to that. So we're working on that. We do need to expand our continuum of care across the board, whether it's achievement, counseling, mental health services, behavior, discipline. We really need to work on our, what I call our continuum of care in the schools. We have some wonderful things happening in our schools, and we have some areas where there are some serious gaps. So I am doing a lot of program evaluation. We have programs that are in our schools that some need help, some need expansion, some need support, some need better practices, some need better assessments, some need better data collecting, so we're working on that. Right after I came into the Southbridge School District, I wrote a grant for the CAST Harvard Institute to introduce universal design for learning. This is the base for everything in what we call our, when we're looking at a triangle, multi-tiered systems of support. Universal design is being brought in at the very first tier. Universal design is good instruction, engaging instruction, working in multisensory ways, expanding the teacher's instructional capacity to engage students, reach students, and to really help them to expand their capacity to access the curriculum. So we have a team of people going to the CAST Harvard Institute from our elementary schools, and they have been very excited, and we've brought that already back for professional development, and it has really taken hold, because one of the things that our AIP did point out, or one of several things, was that we don't vary our instruction, we don't have a collaborative culture in our schools, and we don't do enough data and assessment. So universal design for learning at that very first tier, I can tell you, a number of school districts are designing their entire improvement plans around that at the base, because it gives a really solid instructional foundation from which you can build your second and third tiers of intervention. We are trying to expand the guidance curriculum roles, I've talked a little bit about that. I can tell you that I think that we are, we are in dire need of more mental health services and continuum of mental health services in our schools. Sensory integration theory and systems are new to Southbridge, they are less new to other districts, but they are, they are new, and we are trying to expand our capacity to provide sensory integration to our students. The latest research on sensory integration, there have been two areas that it has been found to be, in practice, very helpful for students, and one is in the area of maintaining attention, and the other is in inhibiting disruptive behavior. So both of those are very important elements for our students. Working on that, again, we, I talked a little bit about our transition programs, crisis management and support. We do not have a comprehensive restraint training program in the district, so we need to take a look at that. Then restraint training is a way of talking about physical management for students safely. There are, you know, the state does require that we have physical management training. 95% of the physical management training that's done in districts is about verbal de-escalation, and how to work with a student who is becoming more and more aggressive and/or agitated, through verbal de-escalation with physical management as a last resort. So we need some comprehensive training in the district for that. And that beautiful girl at the end here, the two girls in the bus, is my last slide. I included in your packet the 504 training I'm doing at the schools, and I am just starting to get to know the transportation cost schedule and the tuition cost schedule, and I'm sure you'll have questions about it, because I'm not sure I completely understand it yet either. But we, I need to do, in addition to the budget analysis that we're doing, we need to do an analysis of our out-of-district tuition costs and our transportation costs as well. I do, I do have to say that I do think that there are some programs that we can bring in-house. We have lost a number of elementary students to Project Grow at the very beginning of this year and at the end of last year. So our numbers, I believe, expanded by, from 35 to 45 for our out-of-district students in a very, very short time. Transportation also is clearly a concerning issue. So I've given you what I can thus far, I'm sure there's all kinds of questions about it. I did my best to spend some time with Deanna, who generates these lists through an Excel spreadsheet. I'm sorry, Deanna Martinez is my administrative assistant,'s been working for the school department for 23 years in special education, and trying to get a sense of, and I've also, I'm, as the out-of-district coordinator myself, I'm required to go to these out-of-district meetings. I'm starting to get to see the different programs, see the level of functioning of the students. I've already identified at least two or three that I think we could bring back to our own programs, that has to be done in a proactive way and over time. But we need some strong oversight with respect to our out-of-district programs and the possibility of developing some of those in-house. So please ask away, and I'll do my best to answer your questions.
Thank you, Mrs. McLaughlin.
Hi, thank you, Mrs. Coligan. I just want to say that it's very obvious, from reading the mid-cycle report, that you inherited a mess. I'm very sorry about that, but I'm really, really, really glad you're here. A number of these compliance issues were due to be responded to October 19th. You did not come on board until November 13th. Were these issues responded to, or have?
They were responded to, but they were not, they were not completed.
Okay. Do you know about the more immediate ones, and this goes back way before you came here, the ones that were June 29th? There were a couple practices that the state said needed to cease and desist immediately?
I believe that most of the practices that needed to cease and desist immediately have, that has happened, yes.
Thank you for that. I know you didn't go over the 504 handout that you gave us, can I ask you just a couple questions on that?
Of course, by all means.
Just relative to some acronyms. On page one, there's, it says OCR guidance recommends, what's?
Office of Civil Rights.
Okay. And then on page three, examples of mitigating measures, FM system to ameliorate effect of CAP?
Central auditory processing disorder.
Okay. I'm writing fast.
That's okay.
And then, when it says, who is responsible on page six, district-appointed coordinator, are you the district-appointed coordinator?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So apparently, there was a 504 form in the current EZIEP program, which we're not using anymore. I, it's not, it's inadequate, it's not up to date, it doesn't embrace the categories in the new law. And the Department of Justice and the Office of Civil Rights have been very clear and prescriptive about the kind of forms that we need to use. So we did revamp all those for the Southbridge schools. They're also very clear about the reporting of those forms, where they need to be kept, follow-up of those forms, and they are also requiring that we go back approximately a year, a full school year, which is the 2011, 2012 school year, to look at all of our non-eligibility decisions and review them again based on the new law. So part of what we're doing is I go to each of the schools, is we look at, we're kind of doing an audit of the eligibility and the non-eligibility, and double-checking that students who were, who were found ineligible under the old law will be revisited again. So that's part of the process of fixing that compliance issue. Thank you.
Faith, did you have a question?
I actually don't have questions, I have suggestions.
Okay.
You say that you're trying to improve on some areas of the school. And so, one thing I feel that is really neglected is SATs. As much as we focus on the MCAS, and I know it's really important, something, like, I mean, the goal of high school is to advance to go to a college, and I feel like the process is usually really, really late, especially for the seniors, like, some of them are still taking SATs their senior year, and I feel like this should be something that is addressed the end of the sophomore year, so they're prepared, their junior year, by, let's say, December, that's the first SAT date.
Yes.
They take it, so by the end of the junior year, they know where they are, what they need to work on, and they take it once more in June, and they're all set. So, during the summer, they can think about colleges based on their SAT scores, where they're qualified for, if they need to take it once more at the beginning of the senior year, that's something that really needs to be worked on, and it's really important for the seniors because it really disqualifies them for most colleges, scholarships, which are really important, so. And another thing I feel like is, should be addressed maybe in health class or some class like that, is communication amongst the students. I feel like students really can't work out their problems because they're not taught how to. I'm lucky enough to come from a family that I'm taught to talk out my problems before I fight about them, and this is not something that is common to most families. And so, if we actually address that in class, is so the kids know we can talk it out before we get aggressive and all that stuff, so that would be really important, and that's it.
Well, thank you very much, Faith. You're right on, absolutely, about the SAT process. And also, maybe we, we, we need to start looking at career fairs, and we need to bring folks into the school, in particular for career readiness. That's one thing, and, and it's funny that you would mention the communication issue among the students. Mr. Leach and the district leadership team were just talking today about, in the past, there was a peer mediation program with peer leaders and, and some discussion about how we might be able to get that back up and running again, too. So, thank you very much for your comments there. They're very excellent.
Thank you, Faith. Thank you. Is there any other questions tonight? Mr. Donovan?
Thank you. Maybe for once, I don't have too many questions. Basically, what I wanted to do, Mrs. Culligan, was to just commend you for the hard work that you've done. You know, I sat on the selection committee when, you know, we were interviewing for the Director of Pupil Personnel Services, and, you know, right away, you had what it takes to come into a district such as this. And, you know, for a long time, the reason that I personally ran for school committee was because I just feel for a long time, there was a lack of leadership and accountability, best practices and communications on all levels. And sadly, this is just one area that, probably the area that should have had those issues the most. You know, what these, the families and the children that are part of this section of our district need the most and the very best, and for them to be lacking in all areas because of people not being held accountable and not doing the jobs that they were supposed to do. I agree with Mrs. McLaughlin completely. It's, it's very sad that someone that, who is new, cannot get started and work on the fabulous new directions that you have proposed when you have to go back and look at compliance issues from two thousand eight, two thousand nine, letters that were written in June of two thousand twelve. I, I apologize, I know it's not your fault, it's not my fault either, but you, you deserve an apology. The children and the parents who are part of the special ed department also deserve an apology because it's, it's very sad, it's very unacceptable. However, the good news is you are here, and the even better news is the man to my right is also here. And I am very confident that the two of you, with the professionalism, the integrity, the work ethic, the capability, the leadership that both of you bring to the table, as well as in working conjunction with the seven of us up here, I am very encouraged that you will do what is right and that the special ed department can be one that our district can be proud of, one that is best for the kids. That's the bottom line. We're here for all our kids, and these kids right out of the gate are at a disadvantage and may need a little extra here and there, and we have to make sure that they get it at every single level. So, I'm not going to ask you any questions, I just wanted to thank you, and if there's anything that I can do to aid in this process, please count me in. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I have felt very supported, and I appreciate that very much.
Thank you. Any other? Dr. Dabinko?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you to the superintendent. Buzz, after listening to what you have heard and probably having a lot more insight from what is happening in the Department of, of Pupil Services, what do you see? Where do you see it at? Where do you see it going? How do you think we're going to get there? And what do we need to do to put this on the right foot?
I, I think Mrs. Culligan has made an outstanding start, and she's put in a lot of time and effort. What I'm looking at is staffing levels and how the programs are run. She's doing a program evaluation that's absolutely necessary, where she said that we're looking at all of this across the board, and we may have too many people here, not enough over here, and some things need to go. And while within the constraints of the budget. Always recognizing, as Ms. Donovan said, that special education kids are called special education for a reason, and they need special services. And, and, and we have to do our best to provide appropriate services, not too much, not too little, and it has to be timely. And I think that's what's been happening, is that the lack of accountability in certain areas has shown to be one of the most difficult things. And what we're doing is trying to create an accountability system, so the services are delivered appropriately and on time, and that the parents are actively involved in this because they're an active partner in this. These are their kids, they have a right to be an advocate, they should be an advocate. So, so what I'm hoping for, let me rephrase that, what I expect, okay, all right, is that during the course of this year, we will remedy many of the old things, and then we'll put together a proposal in the spring for fiscal fourteen, which has a revamped organization, a revamped system that will provide the services, and then also be able to report about it, and, and that. So, so what we're doing right now, system-wide, is creating procedures, accountability systems, and aligning them to what we have to get out. Last night at the town council meeting, I was asked, what is your goal for the system? And clearly, the first thing we have to look at is to get out from Level Four under performance label. And that includes regular ed and special ed, all aspects of it. And one of the things we've been very concerned about is, is how kids are being provided the support for the testing, MCAS and so on. So, we're looking at that very carefully. And I, I asked how many alt-ed evaluations were done, and very few. So, those kids that shouldn't be subjected to something, they're not going to be successful. That's what becomes a responsibility of the team chairs to develop the alternative education testing process for them and go through with that. That's one of the things we've talked about. But, we can't fix everything in six months. Okay, that's, that's the problem, and we're making, and, and what I'm doing for, for two weeks from now is for, develop a, our strategic plan with timelines, with benchmarks, and so on, so we can report this out on a quarterly basis, so everybody's informed about this. This is part of the problem of communication. And, and, and the AIP, which is the three elements we're working on, has all of those things in place. So, so a long answer to a question is that, is that special education is an integral part of what we do. And I think that we need to spend more time in the response to intervention. We have a very high rate. Twenty percent of our students are designated as special education. The state average is about fourteen, and national average is about nine or ten percent. So, there's something we need to take a look at. And what we need to do is intervene early and very rigorously so those kids can be successful, so they don't become, and that's what, that's what's been missing. We have a, a four-year-old and a five-year-old program, very, very critically important because all the research shows that the sooner we get them off to a good start, the more successful they're going to be. So, that's one of the things that, and then we have to make sure it goes pre-K through grade twelve. This response to intervention, training all the teachers, universal design, is, you know, it's, these are big names, but basically what it means is good teaching and collaboration is what it, what it means. And that the classroom teacher is actively engaged in providing the supports for that student. And then we have special ed people working with them. The collaboration isn't there. That's what I'm, that's what we're not seeing, and, and the conversation. People just going off doing their thing, and that's not working for us. And, and, and the parents are frustrated to a certain extent. And Mrs. Shaw is dealing with a couple of examples right now, that our services need to provide it timely and accurately. And if they're not, I'm going to hold a person accountable for it. So, that's, that's what we're looking for. It's a tough job, and, and special ed directors have a particularly tough job because they're in the middle. They're trying to provide, and then you have parents, you have advocates, you have teachers all pulling in different directions. So, we've got to commend and compliment Ms. Culligan for hours she's put in and dealing with all of this and so on, but we will correct it. That's, that's the goal. And what we can't correct, we'll, we'll come out and, and talk about it and see how we can do it. But, the other aspect of it is we send a lot of kids out, they need to be in their own community. And so, we have to build over a couple of years, a long-range plan to provide services in district, in district, because the kid lives here and has to develop relationships here and so on, so I think that's very important. So, but you saw the list of what we're responsible for, and OCR, Office of Civil Rights is right there looking all the time. All it takes is one telephone call, and they'll be saying, hello, Superintendent Nebraska, how are you? And I won't be smiling. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I think it's nice to hear that some milestones and measurable outcomes will be coming on a quarterly basis, based on which, and I would like to thank that you just promised us a presentation of new programming or remodeled programming and program development, organizational structure, and instruction delivery. Am I right?
Right, that's absolutely, because that's all a new budget. The budget has to reflect the priorities. And then one of the things we're doing with the district leadership team is, is as we develop this new budget, all the programs will be right there on the table. And, and so, so we'll come forward with that with explanations for all of those and rationale for why we think it's important. And then, then a, at least a three-year plan for some things, because we've already talked about the need for a, a, a program for the elementary and secondary for disruptive students. I don't believe in suspending and expelling kids out to the street. At the same time, I don't believe one child or two children should hold twenty-three or twenty-four kids hostage. So, we, you know, so, so that's one of the aspects, and when you start looking at the prices we're paying for some of these things, we can provide those services in town, and that's what I've done in other districts, is set up alternative programs.
Thank you. I think Mrs. Principay was next, and then Mrs. McLaughlin.
Thank you. One of the issues that, that I had that was in our packet is the transportation costs for a special ed, and I don't know, Ms. Culligan, if I address that to you or to Mr. Wigan.
Why don't you address her first, and then if she can't?
Okay, one, one of the things that struck me first is it's fiscal year twelve. Now, is, are we going, are these last year's figures?
It should be fiscal what, year thirteen.
So, these are, these are current figures?
FY thirteen, yes, these are current.
It's FY thirteen.
Yeah, just the typo, yeah.
I don't understand some of the numbers, and I know we haven't updated, but, but there's still some of them are the same.
Yeah, I understand that you don't understand. I'm not sure I understand all of them either.
I see that we have, just, just for an example, we may take this up further in budget because there's a lot of questions on these line items for me. And I'm, we are three hundred fifty-nine thousand dollars currently in the red in sped transportation, which is alarming. And is it because we have so many additional students coming in, or is it because they're going somewhere that's a great distance?
All that, all that.
All of it?
I can tell you that, yes, I was alarmed by it as well. And again, I'm, I'm a little less well-versed on this than, than Ms. Martinez. So, for example, we have a lot of students that are going out to Project Row. One of the questions that I asked her, for example, you have an upgrade to a Type Two that raises a price of a vehicle, so you have a vehicle that you can get five students into, which is a cheaper price. It also has to do with whether those children require monitors on those vehicles, how far the vehicle goes, whether there's a summer component to the program, so some of the days vary because of that. There is a, a large piece with the work experience program in Town Shuttle. That is a, that is a very large cost, one hundred and thirteen thousand, which needs to be dealt with as soon as possible. I also do think that there was a number of students that did go out, that were unanticipated as going out. So, I, I didn't have, I don't have, I haven't had a chance to really do a full cost analysis with respect to previous years on this. What, what I did do is make sure that we had, you know, I knew where the programs were, how many kids were going to those programs, what the cost was right now, which is the piece that we kind of had to work out before we came here today. And, you know, as far as past practices and/or why it's higher and anticipated or hasn't been budgeted, I, I can't answer those questions.
All right. I think, you know, I, I think it would be appropriate if we took it to a budget subcommittee because I do have an awful lot of questions, but I just, it's, this is not a high cost, but I don't, could somebody tell me what homeless transportation for various students means and they're going to Eastbrook Field?
Well, under McKinney-Vento, we are required for students that are homeless from our district and other districts. If they're in a foster home and it's temporary and they're considered homeless and/or they're in a shelter, to provide transportation to their schools. So, it often happens that a child is moved to another district, they're one of our children, they're moved to another district temporarily in a foster care situation. We have to provide, we have to provide the transportation under McKinney-Vento.
Let me just address that. It's, it was a federal policy, it's an unfunded mandate. We're required to provide transportation to students who are temporarily homeless. If there's a homeless shelter or a hotel or something in town, we have to provide transportation to the school they were going to. And, and, and it's a noble program because they don't want to disrupt the education of the student.
I'm just, uh-
But, but what they do is they stay required at the receiving town. Another district where I, where I worked before, we had lots of low-income housing, and we were spending eighty, ninety thousand dollars a year with no reimbursement for that to other districts, and you're just required to provide, and a lot of times you use a taxi cab and to provide all of those things. So, here, we have, this bill, by the way, is fairly low.
It is low?
It's low.
I just didn't understand it.
So, that's what the, so McKinney-Vento acts, homeless transportation, and, and you have to provide that, so.
With that, I'm just, I'll wait for budget.
Okay. All right, because I, and honestly, I, I need to do a better analysis myself, have some time to take a look at, you know, if they're, how the roots were established, how many, how many could be consolidated or not, or why they aren't consolid, I mean, because I have a lot of questions myself, so that's also part of it.
And I realize how much you have on your plate right now and what you've come into.
This is still important with respect to-
I understand. Thank you very much.
I agree. Thank you.
And that's one area that's, she's understaffed. Okay, this is one, this clearly, and that's one of the things we're trying to solve now by redirecting some existing staff because just a whole transportation issue with special education. And one of the things I, I recommend, I will recommend, is that we buy a few of our own vans and provide transportation.
Absolutely.
And so on, so we can do that at a much lower cost than we're paying a vendor from the outside. And some of our program people already have appropriate licenses to drive students. And then we can use those vans for other purposes, athletics and things like that. So, it makes sense for us to investigate that. But, once we get through this year's budget, and then we project for next year, that's a situation. But, when, when we're looking at in how, in, in-town transportation, things like that, that makes very little sense. So, we'll work on that, and, and, and three hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars left to be the whole.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Lozo?
Yes, I have comments, and then I have a question. One of my comments is I read the, the mid-cycle report, if I could add to, Ms. McLaughlin and Ms. Donovan. A mess is an understatement. I think it's an embarrassment for the money that this district paid for what went on in this mid-cycle report. A lot of what's in that mid-cycle report, I would call common sense practice in special ed, that didn't happen. One of the things I will do is, is, is really kudos to the search committee. Job well done. I think- I think although leadership is very important, I think probably the biggest quality, the quality that you have is you're qualified to do that job. And your knowledge, there's no question, there's something to be worked on here. And I'm sure the school committee will move forward with that. But what makes the big difference here as a school committee member is, when you get your packet under the new superintendent, your packet is at least a nice half a day of reading, of all of the data, tracking, problems, successes, finances, curriculum. It's a breath of fresh air to see this type of communication from the superintendent, and I'm glad that he's staying on a little longer than he'd like, but I'm hoping that we can make it a pleasurable trip for him. One of the questions that I had was, this whole programming travel, this is not new to the district, I'm not going to act surprised here. This is the reason why we brought forward from the building committee in the early stages with the district, that we did not want to give up Southbridge High School. In the plan, it wasn't the building committee's plan, but it was the building committee's future long-range planning of the use of part of the high school for some of these programs. And from what I understand, that we had a stumbling of the administration prior to getting here, that we did not notify the state. I was hearing all kinds of stories. My question is, what happened to the idea of the use of coal trade or a portion of the high school for these programs, so they could come back to Southbridge and be in the hometown? It was all part of the purchasing of the vans, and we, our clinical people were going to work on it. We sold the bill of goods and we're really hepped up on it. It would be better for our kids, and not only that, if we could farm out some of our programs to the other districts, we could actually produce some revenue for the community. Could you please explain what happened to that? Is it still in the forefront or on the burner, or is it just missing?
Well, I'm thinking you're referring to the vocational program that was developed at the new high school. Unfortunately, in discussion with the state, there were a couple of serious conceptual errors that were made with respect to the application process. The application was less than 50% completed, which I heard about approximately three weeks ago. The continuum, when you look at the regulations for expanding vocational services for students at the high school level, all the way through what is considered the transitional age, which is 22, I think one of the things that got skipped over, and I've spent a lot of time talking to the state to understand what did happen. First of all, we were able to bring back three students from a collaborative program. I don't know what the numbers were that were anticipated. I've heard variously that there was discussion about a dozen students would be able to be brought back. The most important thing for you to understand, I think, as a, as a school committee, is that we're really charged by IDEA to create a continuum of services for our students. So I think there was an error in thinking that we had to go to what is called a public day program. When you go to a public day program, yes, you can tuition other students in, but it puts it in a, in a unique situation in that you can, you also compete with, it's considered an out-of-district program, and you compete with other districts, and a student from Southbridge can choose another out-of-district program. The other piece that did not happen, which kind of serendipitously did happen, we, the application was not completed. The program was put at the high school in a self-contained component, which is really where it should have started. And then you build the program from there. Larger districts oftentimes need to develop separate off-site public day schools. But we, as in all this other program building, I think what we really need to look at, we need to look at the expenditures, whether or not the students, if you build it, they will come, will they really come? Do you have enough of the students to offset the expenditures that you're making? And the best way to regulate and oversee that through the regulations is to start by building your programs within your schools first, and then you build out from there. That was a very important piece that was skipped over in the application process. We can still tuition students into that program at the high school. It is, it is overstaffed for the number of students that are there.
Do you, do you see the utilization of the old Southbridge High School in any way, shape, or manner?
Well, I think when you're talking about other kinds of programs, you know, we, there are some programs that require what are called, you know, program quality assurance oversight under special education and others, that you can start a school, there's a regular education school, credit recovery, alternative programs like Mr. Nembrokevich are talking about, for regular education students who just need, either have disciplinary issues or, or need a different kind of setting in order to be able to graduate. Those, it would be a wonderful site for some of those kinds of programs. We can continue to look at developing special education programs with, this web program, work experience program falls under. But then you have all kinds of regulatory concerns in that, that the application was not brought forth with the correct process being put into place.
So it was explained to me correctly, just in a quick statement. I'm not a special ed expert. I lean on your expertise and the superintendent for this. We've had directors come in front of us, probably some more qualified than others, some less qualified than others. And our job is to basically worry about the services to our kids. It's not always about the money, but while the money is being talked about, we try to balance the issue, but the services are first and foremost. And having the space and the ability to do something creative, to be a leader in something, instead of just calling the next district over and say, "Oh, what are you doing? We're going to do the same thing you do." I thought that we had some direction in the past of, of building these programs once the new school was built. And I know it will take time, but I just wanted to know your professional opinion, that if you thought that it was feasible, then I am, again, in the same position, listening to a professional, and I think that supporting you in the, in the upcoming year to complete some of this stuff, and maybe into the future, would be in the best interest of the community.
Okay. I do not see the application to a public day school as being a feasible direction right now. It may in the future if we were to build that program, but we have the capacity to maintain that program at the high school in a self-contained component with vocational support and teachers and staff, and expand it to much greater numbers than it is before we would need to take it out of. Typically, when you, when you do that, it's because your numbers are very large. You always do have some risk of being in a regular educational setting, because the students do have such individualized needs, that sometimes that doesn't mesh with the program of the, of the regular educational school. But I think that program in particular is a wonderful, it's in a wonderful place right now, and in fact, I'm planning on withdrawing the application.
Just one other comment. As a building committee chairman, what we were vested to do was create an environment and a facility, which is the middle high school. At the same time, this building committee, the original town manager appointed us, sought to see a long-term building committee that would look for space, you know, because we know that once the high school was done, we knew it was going to be at the capacity, so we kept Southbridge High School. I think to give options to this school committee and school committees of the future, or sped directors of the future, I would hope that you would be the architect to redesign. We can supply space, but we are not going to tell you what. You have to tell us what you need before we can construct the proper environment for those services.
Well, Mr. Lazo, the 25 Cole Avenue has been wonderfully refurbished by the Head Start. They have seven beautiful classrooms in there. They've gone through the inspection process. We have some summer school programs for our life skills and our work experience students that are there in the summer. And you also have a whole nother wing on the other side that, I mean, I think ultimately it can become a space for alternative kinds of programs. I just think that we have to be sure in these times that we are doing it in the most cost-effective way, and if we start at the beginning and work outward, that ultimately, that it will be able to be, it's a great space for that. And that's kind of, I think, part of Mr. Nembrokevich's, what he's talking about, his two- or three-year plan would definitely see us in that direction.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions, Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes, I'm sorry. In looking at the private day tuition paid, I'm just curious, what does the New England Center do? What do they provide that was a rather large expense? It's a residential program, the New England Center.
Well, if it's the New England Center for Children that I know, it is a seriously intensive program for seriously developmentally delayed children, predominantly autistic.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I'm trying to find mine.
No, that's okay. I just was curious. Again, we can...
And those Project Smile and Project Ready are names for students that have multiple disabilities, significant handicaps, Devereaux's Residential, Willie Ross's, first for students who are deaf. We have a program all the way, I guess there's a program all the way out in Devon's. You know, I would question how we couldn't bring somebody a little closer than that, but those are all things. One of the things that I want to do, as I spoke with Ms. Martinez when we came in, is I want to sort of do a review of all the, what these are called Chapter 766 schools, and they are private schools, and, you know, kind of do an analysis of what you have out in this area. I come from sort of the Worcester East area and know a lot of programs that way, but there are fewer in this Metro West area. So I want to do some research. I attended a conference, a MASP conference, and I want to kind of get some more alternatives for us with respect to out-of-district programs. Now, our collaborative, our Southwest Collaborative, does a wonderful job. They're nice and close, but we have too many students there that I believe that we can maintain in-house.
To go along with that, I was just doing some reading this weekend. Buzz gave me a great book, if you all have time. It was a joy to read during the snowstorm.
I've got one of those, too.
But I came across something that I was unfamiliar with, and it's Chapter 71B, Children with Special Needs, Section 5B, the pooled risk program for extraordinary and unanticipated special education costs. Do we participate in that program?
Well, we do if we have extraordinary costs, and Mr. Wigan and I were actually talking about it today. There is a funding formula. We have circuit breaker, and then we have that particular extraordinary cost statute, so he can speak to that.
Yep. And basically what happens is if in the current year, your expenditures exceed 125% of the previous year's expenditures, then you are eligible for what they call extraordinary relief in that year. I did a cursory look at comparing last year's actual expenditures to what we're projecting this year. Clearly, we would exceed 125%. So what will happen is by February 25th, it'll actually probably happen tomorrow, either myself or Colleen will notify Lynn McKnight at DECE and tell them that we intend to apply for extraordinary relief. And essentially, it's really the same process that we use to actually file for a circuit breaker. We go through and we identify all of the students. There's a spreadsheet, there's a training that Deanna will go to, there's a spreadsheet that's submitted. They will look at it, they will say, "Yes, you apply," and they take basically everybody who applies. They have a pool of money, which at MASP last week, I think Jay Sullivan said was going to be about between $2 and $3 million. And they'll basically divide that up among the applicants. And so we will hopefully get some money to help relieve some of this for this year.
Okay. Anything else? Any other questions before we move on? Seeing none, thank you, Ms. Culligan.
Thank you very much, everyone. I appreciate your...
Thank you.
...your attention and also your kind words. Thank you.
All right, moving on, we have a report of the superintendent, Mr. Nembrokevich.
Yeah, you have in front of you the rotating schedule for the middle high school, and what this is basically is going back to what they had in the past, and then they gave you some rationale. They spent a lot of time discussing this with the faculty, they wanted to make sure all of the elements were covered, and so this is what they're doing. And then the fact I got some communication from the science department, they're looking at, again, for the following year, to study some alternatives. Right now, we teach, well, we say all kids are different, special, and then we treat them all the same way with the blocks. So we have to start looking at some alternative schedules. And the other thing at the middle high school is that middle school kids need different kinds of time versus the high school kids, so we're going to start looking at that, and I'll propose some ideas that you can have a six-period day with different length periods, or a course of it that rotate, and that will create a situation where teachers will have to plan a little bit differently. When you have 40-minute periods, 60-minute periods, 80-minute periods, you can't have the same lessons. So that's one of the things we want to be looking at, and we can, might be able to integrate, put in sooner than later, and will, again, meet our, one of our goals in our AIP of having diversified programs for different type students and looking at subjects differently. Not all subjects created equal. I think that's something that we have to take a look at very, very seriously, because the needs of a science lab, for example, a play and an English class, and all of those things need more than one period. And right now, we're treating everything as if they're all equal. And that's, and that creates this mentality that we're going to present the subject, and if the kids don't get it, that's their problem. And then we talk about differentiated instruction and so on, and so if you got differentiated instruction, you have differentiated time. And this all goes back to you have to know where the kids are, so you need data. So it all fits together very neatly, but now we're trying to put it all together in a program that makes rational sense for the kids, the teachers, and the community. So that's one of the things. So this, this is a step one, because I, when I was a history teacher, my first period and my second period class had gone to World War II. My sixth and seventh period class, we're still trying to get to World War I, because we're tired, end of the day and things like that. So, so I think it's important to recognize that. So this schedule recognizes that. You have the report from the collaborative, and I attended my first meeting last month, and they do a good job with various programs and so on. And I tried to rent them the old high school program. And that may be a start, because they've already been established, and we can get site approval from the state a lot sooner, and so I'll start working with them a little bit about some disruptive students programs and get that thing going. And there's a lot going on over there. So that's there for you to review. And then one of the policy meetings, there was a question about school councils, and I said that I would have the list of all the members and so on in front of you. You have the membership of the school councils. And then our last point is parent-teacher conference that was postponed earlier on, is now rescheduled for Thursday, February 28th, and will be from 3 o'clock to 6:00 p.m. rather than 12 to 3, which would allow hopefully more parents to be able to attend with an extended time period. So I'll, we'll monitor that and come back with how many parents show, okay? So that's my report for this evening.
Mr. Lazo?
Just a quick comment, just to the superintendent, to the chair. You have taken on more in the short time that you've been here than the previous gentleman took on in two years. I just can't believe the information highway that you've opened up to the school committee and the things that you're taking on. I tip my hat to you, and I'm glad you're going to be staying a little longer than you planned, and I'm looking forward to working with you. Thank you.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Through you to Mr. Nembrokevich. I don't know how familiar you are with the Southern Worcester County Education Collaborative, but I had a couple of questions in reviewing this annual report. No?
No.
Okay.
I only went to one meeting.
Okay.
I didn't even know where Dudley was. So that was the first part of...
Okay.
To Ms. Shaw.
Well, I'll just, I'll throw out a suggestion, and we can find the answer to my question later. I know that we will, at some point down the road, through K-12 Insight, will be providing surveys to our families. Is it possible, do you think, or do you think it would be worth our while to somehow reach out to the families who have children at the Grow School in Southbridge and survey them to see if the services that they feel or what they're actually getting for services there are worthwhile, when looking at whether or not we can better service them in-house? Could that be a consideration?
Yeah, K-12 Insights is slightly different, and they're ready to go in a couple of weeks, but people personal services can clearly survey. That's one of the things of an out-of-district program, and you were coordinator, was our staff should go out and then sit on the IEP to ensure that they're getting the proper services. And a lot of times, it's in the best interest of those private day placements to keep the kids there. It's a financial interest. And so two districts ago, I sent the psychologists out to all of the out-of-district placements, and they sat in on the, and then they were able to bring kids back. So that's one of the things you have to look at.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm all set, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Seeing none, we'll move on. Agenda item 11, report of the Director of Finance and Operations. Mr. Wigan?
Yes, first, let me give you some good news, and let me give you a new projected bottom line. And that number would be $62,315.51. The reason for the new number is twofold. The big change would be if there is a section in my financial report where there's a note that says that I believe that this position would be grant-funded. The actual negative balance in the financial report is 42. The position is actually a $44,000 position. In the work that we've been doing to literally analyze every single position in the district, that position in fact is going to be grant-funded. The money is available in the grant to fund that position. So that has changed the bottom line of my projection. The other $4,000 of the change is a conversation I had today with the athletic director, and we looked at $4,000 that we were projecting to spend out of budget for our supplies for the spring. He feels that he can do that out of the athletic revolving account. So those are both positive impacts to the bottom line that I projected. However, I can't come to you and deliver good news without potentially delivering some bad news. I believe, I don't know all the details yet, we potentially have an out-of-district placement. And again, I don't know the details. I don't know what that cost might be yet. So again, the good news is tempered obviously by something that could have a significant negative impact on the budget. Having said that, I would yield to questions.
Any questions for Mr. Wigan? Seeing none, we'll move on. Agenda item 12, our school committee actions. A, move that the Southbridge School Committee approve a lease between the Southbridge Public School District and the Worcester Community Action Council dated January 7th, 2013, for initial term ending on June 30th, 2023, with additional terms and conditions outlined in the lease document, and to authorize the acting superintendent to sign said lease document. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Lazo, seconded by Mrs. Principay. Do we have questions? Mr. Lazo?
Yes, the contract looks much better than the last one we had. Just a quick question to the finance director, through the chair. Terry, this, we understand what this program is. I'm sure that somebody did a cost analysis. Just a quick question. Are we going to run, is this program going to cost the community any money? Are we going to run in a deficit with this of the use of the building? I understand what we're getting paid, but in a breakout of numbers matching to the services that we have to provide to the landlord, how does it, how do we look on that?
I don't believe you're, in the analysis I've done, I don't believe you're going to in the first 10 years. I do believe that before you renew for the second 10 years, that I think you are going to want to take a look at that. And I think one of the issues in Head Start, in talking with Jill DeGillis, I mean, I think she would be the first to admit this, one of the difficulties that Head Start is facing, one of the difficulties that you will face next year in your budget, and we still obviously don't know exactly how this is playing out, because the federal government has not resolved it yet, is what is exactly going to happen with the reduced grants across the board to everyone, both for the school district and for Head Start, as far as the reductions in those grants? Hence the reason why it has, you know, the 1% increase in those first 10 years. But in looking at it out in those first 10 years, and looking at what we were looking for it to pay for as far as percentage of utilities, as far as percentage of custodial costs, okay? It really covers us for those first 10 years in projecting out. And part of that, by the way, is based on knowing the negotiation that the town manager's done for the electricity, and knowing that rate reduction that he was able to negotiate, looking at, trying to reasonably estimate heating costs, custodial, that sort of thing.
And for the public, where does the money go that is paid to the district?
Goes into a facilities revolving account, out of which we pay those utility costs and custodial costs we allocate to it.
Will there be any money left over to put back into the building? Because we all know that we've been looking for energy grants for the windows and stuff like that.
I would, I would have to say no, in the sense of investing in capital projects.
Is there any money left over at the end of the bills being paid?
No, I would say no.
So it's a break-even operation?
It's a break-even, yeah. I would not say it's a moneymaker.
Any other questions?
Are we still on the?
We're on the lease, yes. Mrs. Donovan, do you have questions?
Yeah, thank you. Do you have the lease in front of you, Ms.? Sorry, through you to Mr. Wigan. Just on page two, I just wanted to clarify for the base rent. That is each, each monthly payment is, or from year, how do I say this? The monthly payment jumps up, is it 1% as the years progress?
That's correct.
There was something, originally it was a little bit different, but I just wanted to say that's
That is correct.
What had been agreed upon.
That is correct.
Thank you for that. Just a small question that I had on page three. Under the landlord's notice address, we were still listing 41 Elm Street as the office of the superintendent, and I didn't know if that should have been changed to 25 Cole Avenue.
That should change to 25 Cole Avenue, and I cannot believe the attorney missed that again. I can't believe I missed it again. We can certainly amend that easily.
Yeah, that's no, that's no problem. Page four. Section seven, I just was looking for a little clarification, only because it jumped out at me. It looked a little funny. Halfway through that paragraph, it just mentioned that the tenant shall provide the landlord with reasonable access to the premises for maintenance and repairs, and will replace any damaged glass in the windows and doors of the premises. That just seemed odd to me. Is it just that we, as a landlord, will maintain pretty much everything, but the tenant is responsible for any broken windows and/or doors?
Yes, in the sense of, because if they have a negligent act, essentially, if they do something that damages a window or door.
Okay.
Okay, then they would be responsible for that.
Okay.
If, if it's a situation where they're not there, obviously, and someone comes through in the weekend, throws a stone through a window, we're not going to hold them for that.
Okay, that makes sense. It just seemed odd. I apologize for that.
No.
Page six, section 13.7, our certificates of insurance. I was just wondering, do we have those in hand?
Yes.
We're all set with that. Okay, thank you. And I believe my last question. Page nine, under clause 21 for early termination, this is again something new that was introduced to the lease.
Yes.
The very last sentence, I was a little confused on that. I just didn't know if you could clarify what that actually means there, the very, very last sentence. The term "lease year" is kind of throwing me off.
Well, the lease year essentially runs with the fiscal year. So June 30th would be the end of the lease year. I think what he was trying to get to, and what I was trying to get to in the wording, is I was trying to get the 60-day notice, but I was also trying to get it 60 days prior to June 30th.
All right, that's what I wasn't sure. Does it have to be?
Yeah, in other words, I wanted to make sure that the premise were clear, so that if we were going to be, be using, needing to change around things to use it.
Right.
That we had July and August to get the building ready, and hence the June 30 date was important.
All right.
I have a question. I have a question, okay? And I just thought of this now when you're talking about this. Thought I'd turn it off. Is, do we provide all the paper towels and toilet facilities and everything else for them?
We provide paper, well, we supply the bathrooms.
Right.
We don't supply the rooms, okay? We supply the bathrooms. They supply the rooms.
It's because I use the same toilet facility little kids do, and I got to watch where I stand.
And they supply for the hand dispensers that they have in the room, that kind of stuff.
Mr. Lazo?
Just for the public in the committee, one of the, this was one of the things that I wanted in the contract, is early termination. It's not that it's a bad thing. It gives the district the opportunity that if we have an overcrowding problem, and we want to utilize the academic wing as an elementary school, say a sixth grade, or a fifth grade, or something of another configuration, it leaves the district with the opportunity to change the use of the building and use it more for what the Southbridge residents and the school district needs. And I think that's the whole purpose right now, to fill it and to break even is fine, but in the future, I have a feeling that we'll be utilizing that building for other uses as, you know, the population, if it does overcrowd in various buildings. Thank you.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you to Mr. Wigan. Page three, required insurance amount, reads a minimum combined single limit liability of at least $1 million per occurrence and general aggregate of at least $2 million. The only reason why that's standing out to me is because in the proposed facilities rental packet, we're requiring people to, outside groups, if they want to come in and use our facilities, to have the $1 million per occurrence, but we're requiring a $3 million aggregate. Would it make sense to align them? I'm just curious.
I'll be honest with you, the amount was suggested by the attorney, and I honestly didn't think about it. It was proposed, the $2 million was proposed by the attorney.
Just for consistency's sake, and can I ask another question?
We'll go right ahead.
Yep.
And then section landlords' work, referring more to the last paragraph, but any work undertaken by landlord to prepare the premises for tenants' occupancy, any improvements to the premises or property to facilitate and enable this lease to be entered, shall be credited towards the landlord's 20% contribution as a sponsoring public school district of a Head Start program.
Right.
Are, we are considered a sponsoring public school district?
We are a sponsoring public school district.
Did that, has that always been the case? Because Head Start has been in Southbridge. Have we always been considered a sponsoring public school district?
Well, the town, the town was a sponsoring before.
And now we've taken it as sponsoring?
But there's a number of things that we do as an in-kind that become part of our 20%.
Okay. Is part of that 20% the workers that are hired to work in that building as cooks and food prep and satellite manager?
That's a separate contract. We actually vend to, they pay us.
So we're reimbursed for that?
We're reimbursed for that.
For that figure, so that we're not paying that $76,000 figure?
Correct.
Okay. Just a general comment, too, and I've said this before, I hate approving things after the fact. I understand and can appreciate that it's taken a long time to get this lease done, but the fact is, Head Start has occupied that building now for two months. And, you know, I'm really torn. Do I, do I go ahead and vote yes, because in theory, and I agree that, you know, with them being there, or do I say, this is, I don't know. I don't know how to fix it. You can't go back and unring the bell, but I really would appreciate going forward if we're given an opportunity to vote on things before they occur. That would be helpful. Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Lazo?
Madam Chairman, through the chair, I think you're 100% right, but I think if we can't unring the bell, we're finding out that we can't unring the bell on quite a few issues. And I think with the new superintendent and the school committee working together, we can kind of, as the able mariner turns the ship, we can aim it in the right direction and move forward. I think the, just a question, just a comment on the insurance portion of it, why it's $2 million. I don't think a lease is under our policy manual. Our policy manual is under our district. They have their own regulations that they work under. Being a lease with the town, and it being worked with the town side also, because you have to have their approval, from my understanding, that you can set different regulations on insurance on a lease than somebody like Paul Warner using a facility, we carry the million-dollar policy. So I think that's the only reason why it's different.
Any other questions on the lease? All right, so we have a motion by Mr. Lazo, a second by Mrs. Principay. Can we have a roll call vote, then?
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Oh, geez. Oh, God. I was going, please let it start with somebody else. Please let it start with Principay. Can I pass? Can I, want a friend?
Madam Chairman, she's allowed to pass, but you have to go back to her at the end of the vote.
Okay. Because I am going to be consistent, I will abstain from this vote. I've done that in the past. Thank you.
Dr. O'Leary?
Yes.
Mrs. Principay?
Yes.
Mrs. Woodruff?
Yes.
Dr. D'Amico?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mr. Lazo?
Yes.
Six yes, one abstain.
Thank you, the motion passes.
Madam Chairman, just a parliamentary tidbit. Any member that wants to pass during their vote is allowed to pass, and then you have to go back to them, and then they have to actually take the vote of abstain or yes or no.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Moving on. Vote to approve an anonymous donation in the amount, amount of $5,000 to Eastford Road School. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Lazo, second by Mrs. Principay. Are there any questions or discussion on that? Mrs. Donovan?
No question. I just would like to say thank you to whoever the anonymous donor is. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, seeing none. Let's have a roll call, please.
Dr. O'Leary?
Yes.
Mrs. Principay?
Yes.
Mrs. Woodruff?
Yes.
Dr. D'Amico?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mr. Lazo?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Motion passes. Next, vote to approve the appointment of a district-wide wellness committee, members to be appointed by the superintendent of schools. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion from Dr. D'Amico, seconded by Mr. Lazo. Are there any questions on that? Questions or discussions? Mrs. McLaughlin?
Madam Chair, should that vote read to approve the creation of a district-wide wellness committee instead of vote to approve the appointment to be appointed? Should that say creation just instead of appointment?
We can change it to creation. I don't, I mean, appointed or creation?
Create, creates better.
Create is better by the superintendent.
And then the appointment would be the superintendent's.
Okay. All right, so it'll be vote to approve the creation of a district-wide wellness committee, members to be appointed by the superintendent of schools. All right. Any other changes or discussion? Mrs. Donovan?
Thank you. I just had a question. I think that this is a wonderful thing, that I don't know if we've ever even had a wellness committee as a result of this school committee before, but I think it's a wonderful thing. I think it's a great necessity. My only question would be, Madam Chair, through you to Mr. Nebberco, do you have a goal or a timeframe of when you think this committee would be established to begin its work?
I think next month would be appropriate, okay? So we can, I'll, I'll put a, we'll put it on the website to have it, let people know that it's been created, and members, people would like to apply for membership, and then we can go from there. That's probably the best way to do it. And then also copy to the PTA, and other organizations saying that there's this organization.
Great.
We invite the membership, invite applications for membership. It's getting a little late, so.
Thank you very much. I'll set. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mrs. Principay?
Yes.
Mrs. Woodruff?
Yes.
Dr. D'Amico?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mr. Lazo?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Dr. O'Leary?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Thank you, motion passes. D, vote to approve the Southern Worcester County Educational Collaborative annual report and audit report for the 2011-2012 school year. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion by Mr. Lazo, seconded by Dr. D'Amico. Any questions at this time? Seeing none, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Woodruff?
Yes.
Dr. D'Amico?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mr. Lazo?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Dr. O'Leary?
Yes.
Mrs. Principay?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Thank you, motion passes. Next motion, move that the Southbridge School Committee approve the creation of a Southbridge Middle High School store revolving account for the purpose of paying for expenses related to the school store and depositing receipts generated by said school store, and be it further moved that the committee recommends to the Southbridge Town Council to also approve the creation of this revolving fund. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Lazo, seconded by Mrs. Principay. Do we have any discussion? Mr. Lazo?
Just a quick question. Just a quick question. I think that Frank Cumanellis is doing outstanding job. I know during Christmas, there was quite a bit of shopping going on, and they had a slow start with the store, but they have a tremendous amount of merchandise, marketing in the middle high school. My question is, with creating a revolving account, and we've done this before, where do the profits go? As far as, I know you're paying for the merchandise. Is store is going to run? Does it go to the general fund? Does it go to a specific?
Goes into the revolving fund.
And what's the revol... Oh, it goes into the revolving?
Goes into the revolving fund. The revolving fund then in turn buys new merchandise, and what you hope is you build up a profit in the revolving fund to help offset conceivably the cost of Mr. Cumanellis or, you know, even the business program.
Well, that's what I'm saying, because most revolving funds earmark the money used.
Right. That's what you're doing here.
Like we have this athletic revolving account, it only can be used for athletics or something.
Right, and you're doing that in your motion. You're earmarking those funds.
Dr. D'Amico?
If somebody could explain to me the reason that we need to also move that the Southbridge Town Council approve the creation revolving? Do all revolving accounts have to be approved by the town?
By state law, the legislative body of a town has to create the actual revolving fund.
Okay, but that's not because then they can use it.
No.
It's just they have to create.
That's just the law says they have to do it.
Thank you. Thank you much.
Any other questions? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Dr. D'Amico?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mr. Lozo?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Dr. O'Leary?
Yes.
Mrs. Principay?
Yes.
Mrs. Woodruff?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Thank you, motion passes. Move that the Southbridge School Committee approve budget transfers totaling $5,645.65 as detailed on the budget transfer form. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Dr. D'Amico, seconded by Mr. Lozo. Do we have any discussion? Mrs. Donovan?
Thank you. Through you to Mr. Wigan. I just didn't know if he could just give us a brief overview as to why these transfers need to take place, please.
The first three entries happened that between the time you approved the big transfer and the time it was actually posted, there were other expenditures that were posted, so it threw the account slightly out of whack, so these correct that to make that correct. The last one, there is $5,000 of invoices, expenditures related to the West Street School that Mike Como asked me to transfer funds into, and then the others simply balance off those other accounts.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mr. Lozo?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Dr. O'Leary?
Yes.
Mrs. Principay?
Yes.
Mrs. Woodruff?
Yes.
Dr. D'Amico?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Thank you, motion passes. And finally, vote to approve a donation in the amount of $100 from Community Crusades for Children Incorporated Kid Education Fund to West Street School. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Lozo, motion. Dr. D'Amico, second. Is there any discussion? Mrs. Donovan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you. I just didn't know if it'd be possible, just for the purpose of the public, to let them know about this kid education box. I know that it's new and it's only at West Street, and I just myself recently became familiar with it. I just think it's a wonderful program, and I just didn't know if you could possibly just quickly explain what it is. Thank you.
Sure, I believe we have an expla... I'm not familiar with it myself, so...
Well, there's just a quick little blurb on the last page of our packet of the check that we had.
Uh, yes, the check.
Yeah, right there, that's perfect.
Alrighty, so Kid Education clothes bins have arrived to West Street School. When it's time to clean out your closet or thin out your collection of books, you may deposit them in the bin located at the front of West Street School. The company, Kid Education, recycles items and the school receives 13 cents per pound for clothing. These contributions by people in the community generate funds for charities, schools and organizations in your town or in our town. So basically, it's kind of like when you put your shoes and your clothes in, they take those items and we get a certain percentage per pound.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I just think it's a wonderful thing that we have.
Any other questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Lozo?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Dr. O'Leary?
Yes.
Mrs. Principay?
Yes.
Mrs. Woodruff?
Yes.
Dr. D'Amico?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Thank you, motion passes. Moving on to Agenda Item 13, unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business this evening? Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes, thank you. Madam Chair, through you to Mr. Lozo. I was able to go up to the school, and my family and I went for a walk, and we looked at the fields, specifically the baseball softball fields in that area, and went up the back trails there. And then I was going to ask you this, I apologize for not asking you before the meeting, and then I saw in the newspaper that you had said there's still some work that needs to be done up there, which is what I was going to ask about, because there was still some construction debris. The roadways appear to be washing away. What work needs to be done there and what's the timeline? Do you know?
Mike Como's been on this with film during rainstorms. I mean, Mike has done a fantastic job. He's called me up, I met him on site in the middle of one of those real torrential downpours. There's a question on the baseball and the softball field drainage as it comes down towards the tennis courts. Cassigley has guaranteed that everything will be straightened out. They couldn't do it during the winter time. It's one of those things that, you know, you're going to see some of the baseball turf has to be worked on. I think the softball field, they're just low spot. All of this is supposed to be taken care of, and they will be supposedly using the fields. That's why the fields were never signed over to the town for use, is because they're not done with them. And when they present them to us, they should be completed, save drainage, cleaned up, all the construction debris, everything done. At that point there, then after, you know, we have our warranty. As one of the things that happened Sunday, they went in for a basketball game, and there was water dripping out of the vents. Well, supposedly, somebody said it was a roof leak. It wasn't a roof leak, it was the actual snow that was drifting, and it blew into the duck area, and then what happened was in the trap, it melted, and then it started dripping. They're working on that, on what happened, whether it was gas gate or some flaw in the mechanism. But these are the kind of things, they had a defective sprinkler head that opened up in the entryway, they repaired that. They're having an issue with some of the gas pressures and stuff like that, so there's a lot of adjustment regulation. But as far as the fields, the baseball and softball, they have quite a bit of work to do up there.
Thank you.
Okay.
And can we get them to pay for transportation if we can use the field?
This discussion is a serious discussion that's going to take place at the next business meeting of the Building Committee. There was some issues of some maintenance workers also during some of the project when they said, oh, we'll cover that in the project, and then later on it came out of the budget. So I think at the next meeting, the town manager myself and Terry are supposed to address those issues. One of the issues I'd like to bring up while we're on the school building is, Terry, I know that we've got money voted over to do the scoreboard. What happened to the scorer's table? We were supposed to have the light-up scorer's table in the project. That was one question. And then there was another question about the common areas are not furnished. They were supposed to be furnished.
Common areas are not...
What's that?
What, what, I'm not...
The common areas in the pod? Initially, we thought they were supposed to be furnished. If that's something we have to bring up, and I thought, I didn't know if that was in the plans that we worked in after the committee went through it. But the scorer's table is a big question. One of the teachers, they made a makeshift scorer's table, but everybody in the surrounding towns, when they built their school, first thing they do is they put in the light-up scorer's table, and we don't have that. And then the council put some money, extra money in our budget to transfer the old scoreboard out of Wells, and I don't know where that's at. If that's something that has to go to the Building Committee, but I thought that was handled on the school side.
I guess I would have to... I will look into it. I have not ever seen a proposal for the scorer's table, so I guess I would have to say I truly don't know.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other unfinished business? Seeing none, we'll move on to new business. Under new business, we have the first reading of the school meal charge policy file EFD. Would one of the policy... Would the policy chair like to just quickly go over that before we vote, or?
I would, but I'd like to make a motion to waive the actual reading of the entire policy.
All right, we have a motion to waive the entire reading, and we have a second on that motion to waive. Before we waive that reading, would you like to just discuss it a little bit, or the changes that we made?
Certainly. This is a policy that is not new, but it's new to our policy manual. It was a policy that was contained just within the food service department, and you'd know about it by getting on our website, looking up food service. So we thought it was important to put this in our policy manual, and we gave it a file EFD. There were a couple of things that changed because things weren't exactly very clear with some of the issues that were brought up. For the elementary school children, one of the things that changed is originally if a student did not have their money or brought a lunch with them, they would charge a meal. And then the cafeteria manager would give the child a slip, and the child would have to go to the principal's office with the slip and then go back and try and get lunch, and that was ridiculous. By the time the student got back, lunch was over. So it's the cafeteria manager will fill in a slip and be responsible for bringing it to the homeroom teacher, and then it will go in the child's backpack. So that was changed. The other thing that was changed is after three unpaid charges, a child would get a cheese sandwich and a milk. And we decided that we would like to add a little bit more, so we're adding also a fruit or a vegetable.
Yeah, we did.
And that's also for the middle high school. The other thing that we've changed, let me just get this right, with the elementary students, a child would bring their $2 for lunch, elementary. And because the child had some unpaid lunches, the cafeteria employee would take that money and say, this is going towards your unpaid balance. And you have these little children that, you know, it was a chicken nugget day or a pizza day, and they were all upset because they were getting their cheese sandwich even though they had their money. So what we decided to do is, they are allowed to have the lunch that's there, and their balance will still remain the same. And those basically are the changes.
Anyone with any questions? Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yeah, I just wanted to add that part of the reason a fruit and a vegetable was added, as it was explained to us by the food service directors, that makes it a reimbursable meal.
Right.
From the state, from the federal government.
For, I believe that was for elementary, and we decided to add that to the middle high school students also. That's it.
Any other questions before we vote the motion? All right, so the motion is on to waive the entire reading, and it was seconded, so do we have a roll call vote on that, please?
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Dr. O'Leary?
Yes.
Mrs. Principay?
Yes.
Mrs. Woodruff?
Yes.
Dr. D'Amico?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mr. Lozo?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Thank you. Next, before I talk about our next regular school committee meeting, I just wanted to... I probably should have made the announcement earlier on, but it's been mentioned a few times here, so I just wanted to let the public know that last week we had a school committee meeting, a special called school committee meeting, to discuss the procedures of going forward to finding a new superintendent. And during that meeting, the school committee had decided that we would like to have asked Mr. Nebberco to stay on further with us, and we voted all in favor to ask Mr. Nebberco if he would be possibly want to stay with us through June of 2014. And he did agree to that. We're just waiting upon some contract to come out. So Mr. Nebberco is our superintendent and will be till June 2014. This allows us to still do a superintendent search, but give us more time to be more accurate and be able to pick the right individual for the job. So I want to thank Mr. Nebberco for joining our team here. He's done a wonderful job the first four weeks here, and I think it's going to be amazing to see what happens by the time June 2014... Sorry, six weeks, I'm getting corrected. Sorry, six weeks, time flies. But I just wanted the public to know that that has been going on and happening here. And the next regular school committee meeting will be held February 26, 2013, in our council chambers. And any other new business for this evening? Mr. Lozo?
Madam Chairman, I, I would just like to request less special meetings and more taking up business at the regularly scheduled meetings, if we could. I didn't understand, if there was something that I didn't understand about why there had to be a special school committee meeting to do the superintendent's extension. Or we could have done it at a regular meeting, but I like the regularly scheduled meeting. It looks more transparent. It looks more like, you know, you're doing business in public. It just, just a request. It's your call. I just, as one member, would just like to just mention that.
Thank you. I, I too don't have a lot of time to be calling all these special committee meetings, but we did have to have executive session also, which had to be done that week, and we didn't want to wait. So that's why, hopefully now, with a lot of things settling down, we won't be having any more of those extra meetings, and we'll be doing our meetings here in the public and doing that. So we just had to wrap up some things that needed to be done.
One other thing, I'd just like to congratulate the girls' basketball team tonight. They beat Bartlett fifty-nine to thirty-nine. That was a, that could bring the girls into the districts. And I'd like to give my deepest sympathy to the superintendent and his forty-niners. He did lose. He did back the wrong team. I want you to know that. Thank you.
Any other?
Thank you.
Any other new business?
Yeah.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes, thank you. Just want to let the public know that many of our students will be involved in a production of The Snow Queen. That's going to take place during February vacation, February 22nd to the 24th, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday at the Cole Ave facility, the old high school. Tickets are available by calling Gateway Players. Please come out and support the kids. They've been working really hard on that. That's through Gateway. And also on February 27th, Southbridge Middle High School is putting on a murder mystery dinner and a show. And Then There Were None. I believe that's an Agatha Christie, based on an Agatha Christie play. Details of that are on the Southbridge Middle School website. Look at the drama page. There's some information there. I went to, I've been to a lot of the productions. My daughter participates in many of them. And the murder mystery last year was by far the best. It was a lot of fun. And I believe tickets for dinner and a show are ten dollars, or if you just want to make the show, I think it's six, I think. But either, in any event, if you can put that on your calendars for Wednesday, February 27th, that'd be appreciated. Thank you.
Any other? Mrs. Donovan?
Thank you. I have three quick things. Last week in the Southbridge Evening News, there was a lovely article about some kids from the Dudley Charlton School District that participated in Project Three Fifty-One, and I guess it's something that's been instituted by Governor Deval Patrick, where three hundred and fifty-one eighth graders from local communities are brought to the state house. They're giving a tour. And then from there, they do public service. They go into the boroughs of Boston, and they help with housing and just different areas to do public service. And I, this was really the first time I had heard of such a project, and I didn't know if that is how it actually gets going. But I know that we do have a lot of wonderful, talented kids in our school district that if this is something that we could look into in the future, so that we can have one or two representatives from our school district each and every year, once they hit eighth grade, to participate in this project. I think it's something that would be a positive thing and very, very worthwhile for us. So that's something that I wanted to mention, and perhaps I'll take that upon myself to look into further. Second of all, last Thursday, I had the wonderful opportunity to attend a little play that the first graders had over at Eastford Roads, West Street School, I'm sorry, Mrs. Canoyer's grade one class. They did a little play called Stone Soup, and it was phenomenal. And all the little kids, they all brought their little cans of whatever it was to participate in the play, and then they actually served soup to the parents. And it was just a wonderful community event, and it was just really nice to see the kids so involved, and it was very special. So I wanted to congratulate Mrs. Canoyer and the children in her class. And last but not least, in light of Mrs. Woodruff's announcement this evening relative to Mr. Nebberco, I want the public to know that when that vote was taken last week, and I'm probably going to do it again, it actually brought me to tears. It truly did. I just need the public to know and trust that never, ever has a man of this caliber entered our school district. And to be able to sit up here and have a gentleman with the leadership and the knowledge and the integrity and the professionalism to take our district from where it is and move it to where it needs to be, I cannot express my deepest joy nor my deepest gratitude to him. Our kids are so very lucky. Our teachers, our staff, our administrators, every last one of us in this entire town are very, very lucky that we have been graced, that we have been blessed by a person such as Mr. Nebberco to come in here, to give of his time, to help turn us around. We have been waiting such a long time for this. He has earned the respect of everybody here already. And if you haven't had the opportunity to meet him and see him at work, please do so, because there's nothing like this. And I cannot thank him enough, and I welcome you, and on behalf of everybody in our community, I thank you sincerely. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. Anyone else? Seeing none, Agenda Item fifteen, executive session. Vote to go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining for union and non-union personnel or litigation to the extent that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the governmental body pursuant to Chapter Thirty-eight, Section Twenty-one, Part Three. Do we have a motion?
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call.
Dr. O'Leary?
Yes.
Mrs. Principay?
Yes.
Mrs. Woodruff?
Yes.
Dr. D'Amico?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mr. Lazo?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Seven yes.
We'll return to open session for adjournment only. Thank you.